Hey, what's up everybody? It's your host Tanya. Thank you for coming back another week and watching On The Town with Tanya. This week's guest is running for a seat on the Bedford Central School District Board of Education. She has received her MLA in Environmental Management from Harvard Extension with a concentration in sustainability. She's committed to a career in poverty reduction through sustainable development. She's also half-Swiss, half-Tanzanian, I can never say this word, I apologize, and a local mom in Pound Ridge, resident hoping to bring diversity and professional experience to keep our school district as one of the best. Please welcome Namisha Schelling. Hello, how are you?
Thank you so much for having me. I'm very proud, thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us. You know, I just hacked up that name there. I apologize. I think I did it wrong, didn't I?
Namasha.
Namasha. Okay, thank you. I'm so sorry. I apologize. I always tell people I'm a little challenged sometimes.
You won't worry at all.
It's a little thing. So you're running for a seat. Can you tell us just a little bit about yourself? You know, your background, your experience in your profession in the school.
Of course. So, a couple important things about me. I'm half-Swiss and half-Tanzanian, like you said. So I really have a very global perspective. You know, I was born in Tanzania. I lived there until I was 10, and then I moved to the United States. I also have a Swiss passport. I grew up speaking Swiss German and Swahili and English. So, you know, and I've lived on three different continents and became an American citizen in 2014. And I have dual citizenship, so I'm really like gonna have my family in Europe and in Africa. And so I really feel from three continents. People always ask me where is home, and for me, it's just like where I am at the moment, you know?
That is amazing.
Yeah. And I moved to Pound Ridge in 2018. We just fell in love with like the very semi-ruralness of the area, and we just love our house and how private and just it feels like it feels like you're two hours north of the city or maybe three hours when you're only like one hour, right?
Right.
So we just love that. But having no concept of where Pound Ridge is or their community, within those three years, I've just gotten really involved in many different committees. Recently, I was part of the Criminal Justice Reform Committee. I'm currently on the Housing Board of Pound Ridge. I'm on the Comprehensive Town Plan of Pound Ridge. I'm also part of the Inclusion Diversity Equity Advisory Committee of Bedford. And I, for the last year, have been on the Student Achievement Advisory Committee for the Bedford Central School District. And so that's how I started to get involved in the school district. And really what I'm seeing is just that there's such a lack of people of color in any of these boards, you know? And that's a real issue. Like, we have a voice that is important and it needs to be represented. And I really felt that, you know, I was being like pushed to do that, you know, really like called to do that. I had met a lot of other people of color in the community, and I've encouraged them to join these boards. It's been an incredible experience. Like, everyone is so supportive and interested in our points of view and how they help us and support us. So that's been really wonderful, and that's really the main reason why I'm running.
Okay. Well, is there anything that you identify that could help, that could help further that you identified that may be a weakness that you think that you could bring an asset to?
I think really what I see is currently a board that is striving to, you know, better serve a very broad and diverse community. They're just, they need help articulating this, right? They need the language and the communication strategy in order to get this across. Because it's difficult, like right in this SAC, the Student Achievement Advisory Committee of the last year, the focus was anti-racism work, right? And they're not experts in that work. They want to talk about it. They want to push this discussion. But it's difficult when you're not trained in it, right? And if you haven't read all the literature, and if also you haven't experienced racism yourself, it's very difficult to articulate to this, right? And so they're trying. They came out with this amazing anti-racist statement value last summer, which really launched this whole initiative. And it was incredible. But I think now they're struggling to say publicly when you have some voices in the community that are saying, "I don't see racism. I don't know what you're talking about." It's really important to say, you know, guess what? Systemic racism exists in this country, in this state, in this town, and in this town. And guess what else? Also in this school, right?
Exactly.
If you haven't seen it, it might be because you're white and have not experienced racism, right? So give people the benefit of the doubt that they know their own reality and understand their own experiences, right?
Absolutely.
So that's really where I'm coming from, and I really hope that when I'm on the board, I can help articulate this to the community and put them at ease, because I think there is a lot of fear that there will be indoctrination in their children because we're suddenly doing diversity, equity, and inclusion work, which isn't true at all, right? It's not indoctrination. It's simply addressing a need that is there, right? Like, if you, we have students that are special needs, we help them. It's not like we ignore that, right?
With inclusion.
Exactly, with inclusion. And when you have students telling you they're experiencing racism, we believe them. It's true, and we help address that, right, with education. And so I think if you come, I hope if I come at it that way, we can start moving forward to action, not just discussion, right?
Right.
Really improve the opportunity gaps and decrease their opportunity gaps and address them in a way that's real. So that's, you know, that's why I'm running.
Well, that's a very good reason to run because I grew up in the, well, I went to Ripmam and Bedford Central School District. So I've been involved, and they do have diversity issues. Although, I will say, at least West Patton, I love them. My daughters went there, and they are amazing. At least when I was, when my kids were there. Now, they're 24 and 32. So it might have changed, but when I was there, even those parents that had issues didn't really have issues because they were drowned out by the parents that were not gonna let them have issues, you know what I mean? So that worked, and they were very good about inclusion. I mean, really, I mean, amazing. My daughter would come home and say, "Oh yeah, so we had class and our friend so-and-so. Yeah, well, you know, he's special needs, but he's just like us and da-da-da-da." You know, that would be the conversation. Instead of like, "Yeah, such-and-such had, you know, maybe one arm." They wouldn't, they wouldn't be like kids with no training in this would be saying cruel things. You're like, "What did you just say?" So that's how I know they had the best teachers, because all of the kids, I used to have tons of the kids in my house. I was, I was in the childcare field and teaching assistant field forever. And they were all, like, they didn't care if you had, you know, a brown eye, a green, you know, hair sticking up. They could care less. Were you, did we get along? Okay, let's play Barbies, you know? Which is, which is pretty much how kids are anyway. It's adults that have to learn to chill out and relax and, and get the proper terminology down so that if they ask, because they observe, they're very smart. They're smarter than adults, in my opinion. They observe things, and they go by that. They don't go by all this mockery that people are doing. It's just crazy, absolutely crazy what's going on. But I, I trust the kids before I trust the adults, is all I can say. So, so have you identified any other strengths or weaknesses in the district that you think you can, that you can help address?
So I've actually done a very, what I've been told is different than most other candidates, is I've talked to all the principals. I wrote them, and I said, "Listen, I'm running. I'd love to talk to you and just like hear, you know, your opinions about the district and your school and any issues you may have, and how, if I get on the board, like, how can I help you, you know, push forward your agenda?" And that has been incredibly eye-opening, because we have amazing principals that, you know, have, some of them have been in the district for 30, 40 years. Like, amazing, the knowledge that they have. And it's funny, they all said about the same things. They are so, you have so much pride in their schools, which was amazing to see, and just, you know, touched me so much. And then they all agreed the anti-racism work is really important right now, and they are committed to that. So it was interesting to see. They're all on the same page. They have the same agreements, and they understand that, you know, taxes can be high, but we can't always just lower them. Like, we have to, it's not, there's no simple solution to this, right? And I think what is missing is an effective communication to the public about why decisions are being made, right? And I think there is this narrative that, "Let's just lower taxes and we pay too much, and that's it." And I agree, we do pay a lot of taxes. I'm not saying that we don't. But we've been down this route before, in which we kept going below the tax cap, right, for years. And then we had an $8 million budget shortfall, right? So that's not a good thing. We had to fire like 52 people. Like, we don't want to do that again, right? Like, we need to find ways to talk to the public and, and plan for more than just one year, you know? Last year and this year, we went below the tax cap. Probably next year, we might not be able to, because that would put us into financial danger in the future, right? So it's these discussions and explanations and understanding that we all want the same thing, I think. We want good quality schools and educated populace, high property values. We get that, right? There are people who don't have kids in the district, the people who do, they're seniors, they're, you know, empty nesters. We all have to work together, right? And we can't afford to leave anyone behind. And really, the message is that we are one Bedford, and we have to acknowledge that beyond just saying that in a slogan. It's, what are we doing to really bring us together, right? And it's not about Republican or Democrat. It's about one community.
Exactly.
Finding collaborative and creative solutions to problems, right? Money's always gonna be an issue. We can't just spend, spend, spend. There are fiduciary responsibilities when you're on, I get that. But we at the same time have to find ways to solve issues, right? And if you're in education, you never say everything is good enough, like, and that's it, right? Every year, you're trying to improve, and that costs some money. We, as a society, have to say we believe in public education, right? And we're gonna pay for, we're gonna find ways to pay for it.
Absolutely. I mean, I think our community is very resourceful when it comes to finding ways. I mean, I've seen them do amazing car washes for the kids for prom, you know, bake sales, I mean, things that I could, I can't even imagine. And they've raised money for the most amazing things here. So, I mean, and we have, I mean, our schools, I mean, we pay a lot of taxes, but we have the best schools. Like, and if you didn't pay a lot of taxes, guess what? Your kids would be saying, "Oh, well, uh," I mean, I hate to say it, that's kinda, you gotta, you gotta give something to get something. And, and I know other countries that pay high taxes, they have other things like free healthcare and good healthcare. So you pay, it's like, you wanna pay in the front or you wanna pay in the back? Personally speaking, if I have a child in school, you can have, you can have, not all my money, but you know, you can have whatever you need to get it done, because that is everything. If your children, who are your future, are not educated, that goes back to the community when they grow up and they need some more stuff from the community because they don't have the education to get the jobs that they need to sustain themselves. So in the long run, you think, long or short term, which one? I don't know. I say pay. But, so another question for you. What do you believe is the role of a school board member?
So the role is really to work with the other school board members. So there's seven in total, right, board members. So you really have to work together to come to a consensus. It's not about my agenda, right? Because I have to work with everybody else. We have to agree together. And then we have to effectively communicate why we made decisions to the public and to justify. And I think basically be that public-facing group, because the superintendent, the teachers, they're busy. They don't, they have to educate, run the schools, right? And so our job is almost like PR to go around and say, "Hey, do you know that the school board meetings are happening?" We don't, you know, people can come to those school board meetings and complain or say how great things are going. This is, it's a public forum. We are public servants. We are here to educate, to help, and to receive feedback. And to, you know, disseminate like the truth, the facts on the ground, right? And the realities, and to work with the community. And unfortunately, I think there's a little bit of hesitation in that because of previous, like, bad experiences where I think the board is scared because there have been some community members who are very loud and disagree, and things become disrespectful. But, you know, you have to remember, we're all human beings trying to do the best we can, right? I can't know everything. No school board member can know everything, but what they can't do is acknowledge that they don't know it, learn, find the answer, and bring it back. And it's a, it's a communication back and forth, because it's like, it's a lot of time. It's hours and hours of free time that you're giving to the community to do this job, right? So you, you're doing it because you love it.
Exactly, and you wanna see our kids win.
And you care, right? So anybody doing this must really care, and so we have to work together, and there has to be mutual respect between us and the community. I think, I think that's the role.
That is absolutely the role. Thank you. And what is your perception of, of the current working and learning climate in our school district?
I mean, like I said, I really see a board and principals, because I've talked to them, who understand the landscape. They understand that we have a very broad and diverse community. And so that gives us incredible strengths and incredible challenges, right? And what a lot of the principals have told me is what's difficult is that you have a lot of turnover on the board. And so what happens is, you know, one board has one agenda, and then the next board has another agenda. And so it would be nice to kind of, like, more effectively keep one agenda going, right? Whether there is a different board member or not, right? And that there's more of this free flow of effective communication between the school and the board and the public. But I think we're, we're thinking more long-term versus just like one year, you know? Yeah.
All right, so thank you. Yeah, I saw someone say something. Hi Kathy, how are you? Yeah, Kathy, let's see what she said here. I'm just trying to see. It's important for parents to let the board know their priorities. Happy to hear reaching out and will be your priority. Good luck. Oh, thank you. That's from Kathy Johnson. Do you know her? Hi Kathy.
I do not, but that's great, and it's true. It's like, I go to the board meetings now, and what I see is, you know, it, maybe it's Zoom, I don't know, because I've been going only since Zoom, but it feels very removed. And it feels not transparent, even though I know the board members are. So there needs to be either, I don't know if it's social media, or if it's a newsletter, or a better website with more information there. But we have a lot of tools now which we could use to just better communicate. And I haven't mentioned this yet, but I come from an organizing background, right? So in all the nonprofit work I've done, like, every job is all about getting into the community, talking to people, and finding out what they care about. Like, that's what matters, right? That's what I'm here. I'm here to represent you. That's it, right? Everybody who lives here. And so I don't have all the answers, but I know a lot of community members do. So I go out and I ask and, and find out, what are your interests? What are your concerns? What can I do to represent you?
Okay.
That's basic organizing work. And I think if the board did more of that, it would feel a little bit like we're more one community.
Yeah, inclusive, yeah. Absolutely. And I was gonna say, is that, have you gotten any, not complaints, but any ideas or thoughts from people out in the community as you go around now?
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of people have concerns and requests, right? Like, right now, we don't have one librarian for every single elementary school. We have, we have to share because we don't have a budget for it. And a lot of people feel rightly so that the library is kind of like the soul, the hub of the school, right? And so it would be really nice to have one librarian, and the librarian would do more than just, you know, hand out books. It would be more like a media sciences service, because now everyone's on their Chromebooks and getting, you know, all this information. So it would be more of like, you know, how to use the internet properly, how to get good sources, like, all that kind of stuff, especially if you get into high, into high school. And I think it would be good to have one librarian for school, and they would have maybe a more robust role than a traditional librarian. And I think that's a great idea. And maybe one day, when we, you know, are able to go a little bit above the tax cap and to have enough reserves, we don't have to worry, then we can get a position, right, a full-time position that we know we can fund over years. And I think that's another thing that's going on right now, is that we do have a bit of COVID money, quite a bit. I think around $6 million. But that's like temporary money, so you can't use that to hire a permanent position, because in three years, you wouldn't have that money anymore. So you really, you know, things are more complex than they seem. I think there's this narrative that there is just all these extra funds right now. Right, to very specific things. You can't just money for whatever you want.
Yeah. It does seem like that. When they said, "Oh, we got how much? Oh, wow, this is gonna be great." No, we can't quite do what you think. What don't they, I'm just curious, but why wouldn't they get library volunteers?
Yeah, I mean, maybe that could, maybe that could work. I think there's a lot of expertise in the community that we haven't tapped, you know? For sure.
That could be a thought, just a thought, because you'd be surprised how many people are, especially now after coming out of COVID, that are like, "Oh, you know, I'm, I'd love to be out and helping in some way." And maybe they used to be a librarian and want to do it. You know, you never know. You never know. I would try that, though. And so how, how are we doing in our school district as far as the arts and STEM, STEM research and stuff like that? Are there any special programs, or do they have any special programs? Are we still good at that? I know years ago.
In fact, one, so I did this, I think it was called Budgetary Saturday, in which you had presentations from all the different departments, and that was very interesting to see. Do you see the comments? You can't do that with a union contract. Probably the librarian she means, yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Pat. Thank you.
There are a lot of rules.
Yes, I was gonna, I know there are, but it's been a while. I told you my kids are out of school.
There are a lot of rules, yeah. Things are complicated, but still, you know, maybe it's an after-school program or something, because I do know that I think those are not in the budget all the time. So maybe there's a possibility for that. But anyway, what were you talking about?
Oh, no, I was just saying, have we did more, have we, are we still good at science and arts and all those things?
Yes, yeah, 100%. I know, for example, that there was like a new sewing, fashion and design program that sounded super interesting in the high school, and they've been building that out for, I think, the last couple of years, and they're hoping to build it out even more. Sounds amazing, like.
Yeah.
I wanna do that. That's great. I've always wanted to learn how to sew and to design. So yes, and I, when I talked to Dr. Adelberg, he mentioned the fact that he wants a larger focus on STEM. So, I mean, I think that, yes, all, doesn't mean that they don't have a robust program now, but I know that they want to keep building on it and keep opening more opportunities, especially because technology keeps changing.
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
Absolutely. Do you think that it's important to educate the whole child or focus more on academics and basic skills?
The whole child, for sure. And I think there's a lot of data out there, especially on this social emotional learning cell that is really showing that you have, you know, you have to bring children to a certain place in terms of their emotional health in order for them to even get to the academics, right? And I think that's even more true now with the pandemic, right? Like, if you are, you know, alone and depressed at home for the last year, and you can finally go to school, and maybe there's issues at home because someone lost a job, or God forbid, a death in the family due to COVID, how do you have the, the focus on academics, right? Like, you have to deal with everything in order to even get to the academics. It's just so important. And we are actually rolling, ruling, sorry, rolling out this new program called Ruler. Teachers have been learning the last year, I believe, and they're going to roll it out in September. It's called Ruler, and it's social emotional learning, and they're very excited, and I think it will bring a new, you know, a new touch to the curriculum. So that's good.
That is amazing. We always come up with great things, I think. How important is it, is a planning time for teachers in improving students' learning? Especially now, after this whole COVID thing, it's like, huh, they go through a lot.
It must be incredibly important. And I know, like, in SAC, we've talked a lot about professional development opportunities for teachers. And, I mean, there's just so many new things that teachers need to learn and still have to teach, right? So yes, I think there is an incredible, like, importance around planning and being able to plan and having time to do professional film. I mean, this, in this day and age, like, teachers are expected to do so much, right? It's a lot. So yes, I can imagine that having the time to do planning for your weekly curriculum, especially if you are a new teacher or teaching a new course, must, must be incredibly important, yes.
Yes, and after COVID, I'm gonna, when we were on those remote learning, I said, "Oh my God, these poor teachers." They had to like, like, jump into gear, even my daughter at college, they had to jump in gear for the online process. It became a whole nother beast. If you were not tech savvy, you were really gonna be messing up the first few months, and your student's gonna be like, "What are you doing, teacher? No, that's a whiteboard," or this is, you know. You had to know this stuff, or else your students could suffer. So I think our teachers still did an amazing job, and I only know that because I talked to quite a few young kids, and they're still on point. So I'm like, okay, they're doing good over there in Bedford Central School District. You're good. Your daughter's young. She, she's got time. Our, our school district, I still say, is one of the best to me in the United States. And how do I know this? Everywhere I've traveled with my kids growing up, they were always the smartest. Even in districts that were supposed to be fancy-snancy, I was like, meh. My, my kids would run circles on them in math and science. My other ones in science research, you know. It's just incredible, and I didn't teach them that. Well, I helped them, but I didn't teach them all those things. I think it was Wes Patton that really got them in there and made them be able to compete in today's society. And so I still say, we, we're blessed to be here. Do you?
Good to hear.
Yeah, you're, you're in good hands. If you stay here for a while, hang out with us, you're in good hands here. Do you support the salary? Let me see. So, so how do they base like raises for our, for our teachers? Like, do they get included in those budgets? Because I always think, like, they do such a hard job, and I wonder how that goes. Or, or that's not, we're not there yet.
Yeah, there's union contracts that we, as a board, help negotiate and, and side upon. And, you know, it's very specific to the district. Yeah, it's, I think, different per district even. It's, it's quite complicated. I had a discussion with Collette Dow about it, and I'm trying to remember the details right now. It's, it's very complicated.
Yeah. You support that? Got comprehensive master contract that they have, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think it's important that teachers are paid well, right? They have a very hard job. I understand that they need retirement benefits. Like, I, I support all of that. I don't see anything wrong with that. And I think, I wish that the process was a little less complex, and there was more room for flexibility. But that's, that's a system that we live in, right? It's not something that the board can change, like, that's, that it is what it is. And I, I'm very pro-union. And, you know, I, I believe that the union is doing the best for their teachers, and so this is the system that we live in. So, you know, that's it.
Sounds good. Do you believe that the teachers should have a greater input, input of voice in the district decisions that impact their work or the students? And if so, what would you support?
Um, sure, yeah. I mean, I, I think it has to be a more collaborative experience in general. That's the best, that's the way that everything should work. I think it's easier that way. And if, you know, if a teacher has input, I mean, they're the ones in the classroom. They're the ones doing the work. They know the work the best. Like, I don't see any reason why they couldn't have more input. It just depends on what and, and, and how, and all, all the logistics, right? And I mean, they're already busy doing the teaching, and a lot of the teachers are parts of, they're part of different committees, and like, there's a curriculum council, and, you know, I know there are teachers on that. So I think they're already, they're already pretty active in different decision-making.
Okay.
So I, I, maybe they're interested in having more capability in decision-making, and I would totally support that. You know, all the principals I've talked to, they're experts in their field, experts in what they do, trust them. And I think, again, it's just, it's about having a discussion with each other and finding common ground and how to solve problems. And all because we're trying to help the, the students, like, that's what it's all about, right?
Absolutely. It always comes back to the students. So I can't believe our time is up already, but what, as a last thought, is there anything you'd like to tell people when they go out and vote? And when is it? Is it May?
18th. So that's actually exactly what I wanted to say. I just said, "Listen, go out and vote. It's so important." Not a lot of people vote in the school board elections, you know, I think only about 4,000 people vote. So please, go out and vote early, May 18, at your local. So please go out and vote early, May eighteenth at your local school in your district, in your town. So please, it's so important and spread the word. And be informed, you know, we're four different candidates. And that, you know, you make your own decision, make your own decision, your own informed decision on who you want to vote. You can find me on Facebook. I think all the other candidates are on Facebook. So you can find any information you want on them.
Okay.
Search, if you have any questions, please reach out to any of us.
Yeah, I'll put it down there. Where would they reach you?
Uh, oh, let me, let me get it from the chat, from my page.
Okay, no problem.
There's also going to be a forum with all the candidates next week, May sixth. It's also posted on my Facebook page. It's being run by the League of Women Voters. So that's another opportunity to ask questions. And again, like, I'm just putting it in the chat there.
Oh, you put it in.
Do you see it?
Oh, I have to get it. Okay, I have to, I have to grab it.
Yes.
Good thing I looked at that. I'm learning.
No worries, no worries.
I'm just getting this for you. Let me see, have a highlight this. And then I click it and copy.
So yeah, vote May eighteen. Oh, and vote yes on the budget. That's also.
Yes, on the budget.
Yes, on the budget and vote May eighteen.
There it is, guys. I put it in the chat for you all to see that. So, yeah, so May eighteenth, you said?
Yes.
Yes. You have to get out and vote, guys.
Get out and vote.
I'm learning that, that community from the, you know, voting from the local level is so important. And even if you don't have kids in the district, it's like, what do you want to see for your town? You know, if the lights are out on your street or the pavement is really bad and uneven sidewalks, you can blame yourself because you're not out at the meeting. So they think, oh, well, we'll just spend the budget just on school and not on the pothole that someone just broke their leg in. So that's, it's very important for us to get out. And I'm realizing that, I mean, I always knew that my mother worked for the, for the town, the election. But she did a lot of that stuff and that's always why I even got interested. But I'm learning now, like really, you have to really get out as a community and get out in numbers as people, just your whole community, if your whole block likes such and such, everybody go to the meeting, go to the town meeting. Doesn't hurt, you know? If you have kids in school, go to the school meeting, find out why they changed something, why it is great. What, what made it great? How can we make it even greater, you know? So I, I thank you so much for taking time and, and stopping in with On the Town and I wish you the best. And anybody out there, you, you see, it's in the chat for the dates. You can go to our Facebook page and check out her and, and you can check out the other candidates too. You know, Google it. It's all out there, all free information. You gotta know, it's very important to know. Don't just be one of those people says, eh, you know, take care of yourself. It won't. You have to be the change you want to see, period. That's, that's how it's going now. So thank you so much. And guys, don't forget, I'll be back tomorrow. I can't think what day it is. Yes, I'm doing a Friday show. You know, I normally don't do a Friday show. I want to thank some of you viewers out. Let me see who's out here. Donna, hey Donna, what's up? How are you? Let's see, who we got? Kathy Johnson, thank you so much. And Anthony Robinson, Pat, thank you very much. I thank you guys. I, I see Grandma, I see you out there too. And hey, cousin Pat, what's up? How are you? I see a few people out there. Thank you very much. And for those I can't see over there watching from, from YouTube, thank you very much for watching On the Town. Please get out and vote locally. It's very important for many reasons, but just do it. You gotta be, we have to be the change we want to see. That's all of us. And the world cannot change if we are not all together. All of us, every color, every, every economic level, whatever, all that's irrelevant. People have to be working for people and helping people when they can. So get out and do what you can. And I thank you so much for, for joining us. You're the best. We're going to end, guys, on a video and, and our song. So hold out for one minute and here we go. And this song is by, actually my daughter, Tatiana. Okay, so here we go and we're going to end. And I will see you guys tomorrow on Five Black Comics at five PM, YouTube and Facebook Live, Five Black Comics. And what we'll be discussing is why are so many black girls, sixty-four thousand black girls are missing? Where are they? Why is no one talking about it? We're going to talk about it. So make sure you guys check us out tomorrow on Five Black Comics, five PM Eastern Time. All right? Bye.